Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this March 15th regular meeting of the Zion City Council to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number three, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Bremner, will you lead us in to Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbound, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Leading us in prayer this evening is Pastor Chad Ringman from Tristan- Chris- Tri- Trinity Christian Center. Tongue tied.
I enjoyed my time today so much two weeks ago, I figured I'd come back.
We appreciate you coming back.
Thank you again. Thank you. So that's great. How many thought that we just thank you, God, for this day? We thank you, God, for the weather breaking. We thank you, God, for this opportunity to come together in a public forum and discuss and rule over what might be the best thing for this community. We pray that your will be done and everything that happens today and everything that's said in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Ringman from Trinity Christian Center.
I'll put in a good word for you.
I appreciate it. I need more than one good word. Item number five is Citizens' Comments. We have Mary Lou Hildebrandt.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. During the month of February, as the volunteers donated a total of 204 quarter-hours, saving the city over $5,800. We assisted the police department with rehab for a search and rescue at Hostel Park, a malfunctioning traffic light, and a traffic accident. We did the monthly sire test and we assisted the park district with the food pantry at the leisure center. We had a monthly meeting and did various repairs and upkeep of vehicles at the center. If you're interested in helping our center by volunteering, go to the city website and apply. We are always looking for more and more members for our team. Thank you for your continued support.
Thank you, Mary Lou, for the job and you and the ESTA group continue to do for our city.
Thank you.
I see there's a Laura Jansen on here, but comments are that you want to speak with, you don't want to speak publicly, but you'd like to speak with Chief Barton. Chief Barton, would you?
Yep.
All right. Okay. We're through with Citizens' Comments. Anyone else had anything that they'd like to comment on?
Ma'am?
Yes.
Quick point of order. We need to get the agenda changes addressed. We jumped over four.
All right.
You don't know how to count.
Well, I was doing it on the odd system today, since I'm in an odd mood. So item number four, Agenda Changes. Do any Commissioners have any agenda changes?
No.
No agenda changes? Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Motion by Frierson, second by Holmes. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. We'd also like, at this time, just to take a moment to make a quick presentation to a member here of our ESTA group, Mary Lou Hildebrandt. Mary Lou, let me read this so that I don't get my numbers and letters confused anymore. Commissioner Frierson and Sherri Neal noticed an opportunity a few months back and applied for a National Award position for Mary Lou Hildebrandt. So we have a certificate here that is recognizing Mary Lou Hildebrandt as a top 100 National Award winner for Outstanding Public Service Volunteerism. So while we, you've been coming to these city council meetings for years and working with the ESTA group, we've always noticed the work that you and the ESTA group do and Sherri Neal and Commissioner Frierson saw this notice and applied for it, and you were in the top 100 of, in the country for leading your citizen, your city in volunteerism. So without further ado. Now, Mary Lou rarely ever cries that I know of. But this is very fitting for all the work that she does for our community. Late at night when things are happening, she gives us the reports on what's happening. And sometimes we're out at night when her, her out working. So this is the certificate. Small-town America Civic Volunteer War, award certificate of national recognition, Mary Lou Hildebrandt is hereby honored as a top 100 National Award winner for outstanding public service and volunteerism awarded on this 15th day of November at the time. We're not onto it for a while. There you go. And we also have another small token of appreciation for you, for all of you who are in our community. Thank you, Mary Lou.
I gotta turn you in with your mayor and can you guys bring you guys up here? How about this?
If I gotta be in it, you gotta be in it.
I love your dress.
Listen to the bars.
But we love you.
Dick, do you want us to turn around and look at?
Just wanna make sure I got them in the camera.
Sir, I'm gonna walk to your camera.
I'm here, Ken.
All right. Oh, well, oh, give you whoopie. Let's shuffle to the left over in her group in the back. Get in tight. I think Chief Barton took the fat side.
Let me take a side one here, side one. The Commissioner.
Last side, bad side.
Get yourself in there.
Don't be shy. Come on in. Sherri, you wanna use her too?
She's holding my phone. Let us keep passing it along.
Our family keeps getting passed around the room.
Yes, I called our family. We're supposed to Facebook Live right now.
Here we go. We go. They smile, everybody. They smile. Right there, right there, right there. Everybody point Mary. Everybody point Mary. Let me get a side shot so I can. We got this public here in the middle here. Right there, right there. Love it. One more just for people with red big smile. Everybody, I say, gotcha. I think my picture's still up at the photo booth.
All right.
Uh-oh, you're in trouble.
All right, you're welcome. Thanks for coming. Now moving on to item number six. If I'm correct, let me repeat myself.
Correct.
Moving on to item number six, Consent Agenda.
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on March 1st, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Approval but not release of co-session minutes of a meeting held on March 1st, 2022 at 7:29 PM.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion by Frierson?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries.
Bills vouchers 140035 through 140133 drawn on Hunter International Bank. Total $442,327.74.
Is there a motion to approve the bills?
I'll move to approve the bills.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by Holmes. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number seven, Consider Passing Resolution as Follows. 7A, Amending the Personnel Authorization Per Administrator Name.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. In prior years, probably in the past five years or so, we've reduced some full-time positions to part-time, to part-time equivalents in an effort to try and save funds in the city budget. However, we have unfortunately found that it's become very difficult to attract qualified, quality candidates on part-time positions. We've been lucky with a, with a few, but we have some of those part-time positions that are still open and we've had kind of a revolving door of some of the other part-time positions as we lose them to full-time jobs and benefits out there. And with the market being increasingly difficult to try and attract and retain employees, we're trying to bring back those full-time positions, transition back from part-time to full-time. So the personnel authorization you have before you is requesting to add those full-time positions back to accounts and finance and a full-time administrative secretary position, public works as a full-time administrative assistant, and then also in fire and rescue as a full-time administrative assistant. One of those positions is currently vacant. We have part-timers in two of the others, but we will be opening those up to make sure internally that we have, if we have interested candidates, that they have the opportunity to apply to those positions. But this has been affecting city operations in all of those departments as we don't have somebody full-time to wait on counters, answer calls, which often ends up meaning that we have department heads or supervisors having to step in and do a lot of those administrative tasks, which pull them away from their jobs, which we need them doing. So it won't have a major impact on the budget, primarily in the benefits side that will have to, have to increase, but I think it's well worth the investment to present that. There's also one, two other changes on here. One is the removal of a part-time supervisor in the water and sewer division. We had reorganization a while ago where we changed two supervisor of street and a supervisor of water into just a superintendent of public works. The water supervisor was still working part-time with us during transition. He is no longer employed with the city and we wanted to eliminate that position up here. And then also with the accounts and finance position, there's another accounts and finance position full-time that we'd love to add, which is a senior accountant. We have another item later on in the agenda. Again, these are authorizing the creation of these positions. We don't have to fill it if council does not take action on moving forward with filling that position. But that primarily is to help with secession planning within the accounts and finance department of a QW. So I recommend approval of the personnel authorization as presented.
Is there a motion to amend the personnel authorization?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Fisher, second by Holmes. Questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item eight, Consider Passing Orders as Follows. 8A, Approving, Authorizing, and Ratifying an Emergency Siren Maintenance Contract Per Chief Street.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. City's contract for the maintenance of our emergency notification sirens is up for renewal. I am recommending approval of this contract with Fulton Siren Services in the amount of $1,491.28. This is a budgeted ESTA item, emergency notification line 102170. And on a side note, they've been very responsive to some recent repairs and maintenance needs out of the system. So they've been a good company to work with.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion to approve.
Motion by Frierson?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number eight, B, Approving and Authorizing a Certain Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Zion, the City of Waukegan, and Lake County Per Chief Barton.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you. Tonight I respectfully request the city council to approve this memorandum of understanding between the City of Waukegan, County of Lake, and the City of Zion regarding the 2021 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, JGR. This grant is awarded annually by the U.S. Department of Justice. The City of Waukegan completes the application for the grant on behalf of the assigned parties and the funds are distributed to the parties to the City of Waukegan. The MOU is necessary for the City of Waukegan to act as the fiscal agent for this grant. The City of Zion has been awarded from this grant in the amount of $11,745. Of that amount, $2,000 of that will be forwarded to Lake County State's Attorney's Office. The police department has used this grant in the past for equipment installed in SWAT cars, a sweet trailer, and this year we're currently considering the purchase of updating, updated equipment for the training room, a ballistic shield, riot munitions, and other riot gear.
Is there a motion to approve and authorize the MOU?
I'll make the motion to approve the MOU with Waukegan.
Motion by Frierson?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number nine, Discussion, Authorization, Approval. Request Permission to Accept Proposal of Assurance Agency for the Renewal of Health, Dental, and Life Insurance Effective May 1st, 2022 through May 1st, 2023 Per Director Name.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Our current health, dental, and life insurance policies are set to expire on April 30th of this year. So annually we go out to market to try and get quotes, look at what our best options are. So we did that for health, dental, and life. I'm gonna go in reverse order because it's easier to address. Last year we approved a two-year rate guarantee with our life insurance. So that, that rate is actually frozen and good through May of '23. So there's no action necessary as it relates to that. Dental insurance with Guardian, we got a quote from them, "We're self-insured with Guardian," which means we are responsible for the claims, but they handle all the administration and processing of those claims. We have stop-loss policies to reduce our risks associated with that. But their administrative fees went down 1.59% in the renewal, but we charge, we get charged like a premium equivalent for being self-insured. That premium equivalent did go up by 2.2%, but because of the size of the dental premiums, that's only about $1,100 annually increase over what we're at. So I recommend that we approve Guardian as presented. The big item and the big issue that we're dealing with is health insurance. We had a significant increase in our renewal for health insurance, which is not surprising. The market overall for health insurance has been, I mean, we've been dealing two years during a pandemic. So that's now starting to reflect in our, in our quotes. Plus, we've had some significant medical claims on our, on our plan. And when you have a, it's considered a small pool, which the city is compared to large employers that you grew across, a single large medical claim can have a big impact on your risk, your risk overall. So initially they quoted, Blue Cross quoted a 21.89% increase in our premiums. Assurance went back to them and kind of did their thing, negotiated that down, talked their talk to our behalf, and got that down to an increase of 13.25%. Just to put in perspective, we did get, they did get quotes from United and Humana, and their increases were 25% and 144% respectively. So even at 13.25%, that is our best option out there to renew with Blue Cross Blue Shield. That'll have an impact overall city-wide of about $180,000, however. So we're kind of at the mercy of the industry and our claims experience, but I would recommend renewal with Blue Cross Blue Shield as presented as well.
All right. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve health, dental, and life insurance renewals at the recommended rates per the city administrator.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Oh. Question on the high claims. Do we know how recent they are? I think when we had talked at the last renewal, we were hoping some of those were gonna kind of age out.
Those were largely towards the middle and end of last year.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number nine, B, Consider Approval of Agreement for Recruiting Services Per Administrator Name.
Thank you again, Mayor and Commissioners. As I mentioned, we were adding to the personnel authorization the position of senior accountant within the accounts and finance department. You have before you a proposal from Clifton, Larson, Allen, LLP, for recruitment services for that position. We admittedly have not always been the best in planning for secession of key employees. We kind of hope that our employees stay forever. That's what we want. We want to keep them around forever, but that's unfortunately not the case. So with that being said, within the finance department, we have need for someone with specialized accounting and finance skills that will be able to fill the role, be current Assistant Finance Director when she chooses to retire. That is not imminent. I have no notice of that, and I threaten her daily that she's not allowed to go anywhere. But, but we know that that's gonna happen. So in the meantime, what we propose is that this position would shadow the current Assistant Finance Director and learns the roles and responsibilities of that job. In the event of absence, they would handle that position. Additionally, I want them to learn all the other roles and duties upfront, payroll, house payable, utility billing, front counter, so that in the event of those absences for sick or employee turnover, things like that, they'd be able to handle those roles. Due to the nature of the position, however, we felt that we needed a broad range of potential candidates, that we do not currently have the capacity to reach to that talent pool. So we reached out to CLA, Clifton, Larson, Allen, and met with them to discuss the services they provide. And I was impressed with the comprehensive approach they take. They basically cold-call every municipality in the area, trying to coach candidates, see also if there's individuals that may have left or that they're aware of that may be interested. They do an extensive LinkedIn search and reach out to those individuals. But they would basically handle the entire recruiting process, beginning to end, make recommendations to us for us to then interview. Like I said, they have a much broader reach than we can get through Facebook posts, newspaper posts, you know, a few websites, things like that. They'll use all of those routes, but much, much expanded. That would free up a lot of, that would increase our candidate talent pool, but it also would free up a lot of staff time for me and the current Assistant Finance Director and our HR Coordinator in trying to coordinate that process internally. As we're clients of theirs, we're also receiving these services for a discounted rate from a tip, from typical recruitment services. Though, the total cost for these services is around $18,000. I looked at other comparable services out there for this, this position. We'd be looking at probably in the $20,000 to $25,000 range for normal recruitment services. They typically do like a 20% to 25% salary for their services. So we're saying in between $3,000 and $5,000 roughly if we go with them. So I would recommend that we engage CLA as presented for recruitment services for the senior account position within the City of Zion. Additionally, they do have a four-month guarantee on their services that if we bring somebody onboard as a result of this, and let's say that person decides, they might have multiple irons in the fire and they go, hey, I just took this job, but I got an offer somewhere else, or they just aren't a good fit for us within the first four months. If we decide not to, if that person leaves or we decide to discontinue their employment, they would do the entire search again for free.
All right. Is there a motion to consider approval of this agreement for recruiting services?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Fisher, second by Holmes. Questions, comments, or any of the Commissioners?
I would just note, since I work in a human resources department in my, my other life, this is actually, getting a discount on a search like this is a pretty good deal. Having been in a position to recruit for financial positions, it's well worth the money to get a dedicated team to, to do this for us because especially right now, it's hard to fill. It's very, you know, it's a hard one to fill. So, thank you.
All right. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number nine, C, Tabulation of Bids. Replacement of Council Chambers Furnace and AC Per Director Iansen.
Good evening, Your Honorable Commissioners. The city received two bids for the replacement of Council Chambers Furnace and Air Commission. The sponsored bids are Northern Water Act AC,[1539.01][1539.04]$18,654.28, Canadian Gold Heating and Air Condition $7,860. Due to such obstructive steam in the bids, staff is recommended to reject both bids when we advertise they have an opportunity to agree with additional bids.
All right. Is there a motion?
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Holmes, second by Frierson. Clerk, please call the roll.
Oh, discussion, questions?
Questions?
Just a quick question. How old is the current HVAC unit?
Early 90s.
And so now it's gotten to the point where it's more expensive to repair it than to just replace it?
They actually cannot repair it. It's just a little old, yes.
Okay. That, that's what I figured. Okay, thank you.
Is there no questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number nine, D, Consider Appointment to the Liquor Commissioner, Commission Per Mayor McKinney. I think we brought this up at one point, but one of our liquor commissioners, Nadine Thorne, who was an integral part of our commission, had been on the commission for years. She unexpectedly passed away this year. Again, our prayers and thoughts go out to her family. Anytime something like that happens, as passionate as she was for our city and spending time with her grandkids, we miss her presence, but we needed to replace her on the commission. And I reached out to a couple people in the city that I've known and would like to consider, our Commissioners consider the appointment of Beverly Moll as a replacement on the Liquor Control Commission. Is there a motion to do so? Let me say a little bit about Beverly. Beverly has been in Zion community for, I'd say, her entire life. She is a, I'd say, one of our go-getters in the community that is involved in everything positive that is happening with this community, with the school systems, working with our youth to make sure that they are educated and going in the right direction and having opportunities to experience things outside of Zion. And overall, I can say that she is one of our residents, like the ones that showed up at our community forum over the weekend, that is just passionate about things that we're doing. So I would like to support in having her appointed.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Holmes?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Any questions, further questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. You are now part of the Liquor Control Commission, Beverly, and thank you for your volunteer work and everything else you do within our city to make it better. Item number ten is departmental commentary. Director Iansen?
Yes, Your Honor. Just real quick, now that all the snow has melted and all the heavy winds we've had the last few weeks, I just ask all the residents, take a few minutes, go pick up, uh, load the trash around the neighborhood. It goes a long way.
Thank you. Director Roberts?
Thank you, sir. Got a few comments for tonight. We have been receiving a lot of inquiries on the LEAP program. That program actually does not start till the end of April. However, bag yard waste will start April 1st. So we'll make a bag and the waste management will pick that up.
April 1st.
April 1st. Second, we've also been receiving lots of inquiries on hot holds. April first. Uh, second, we've also been receiving lots of inquiries on hot holes. Um, we still have another month before we, the asphalt clients open up to get hot mix. So we have been telling, we do have purpose out there with the cold patch, but we're kinda targeting larger holes. Uh, the smaller ones, we're trying to let go and get those prepared for the hot mix at that time. So it's not, we're not, we're not ignoring the phone calls. People are calling a lot of their smaller ones in. We're just trying to let those last a little longer. Typically what happens a lot of times in this type of weather, when we put a small patch in, uh, there's always wet underneath and then it gets cold at night and it'll pop that patch right back out. It's kind of a waste sometimes. And then a third item I have is I have been drunk, going around the city quite a bit and we kinda jump on the, uh, director Ianson just name. I have seen lots of individuals out raking and cleaning, uh, the catch bases. So I think all those individuals that have been doing, I think this is the most I've seen ever since I've been, uh, working for the city.
All right. Thank you, Director Roberts. Chief Tree?
All right. Well, good evening again. Just a couple of quick things. Last meeting, I promised that I'd mention this a couple of times, so this is the second time and I probably will mention it again. Piggybacking off the nice weather, snow melting, just a, a reminder of, um, of our burning ordinance. Uh, keep, we can keep our burning to recreational campfires only. We can't burn our yard waste. Um, so it's a great reminder that, um, the bagged yard waste will be picked up soon. Um, and that's not just us telling our residents, we don't want you to do it. There's safety and health concerns because of that. That's what, that's why the ordinance exists. So appreciate everybody's, um, cooperation with that. Um, the second thing I just wanted to quickly, uh, mention again is, uh, another congratulations to Mary Lou on the award. Uh, but I feel it's equally as important to, uh, point out, um, that she does that great job of leading the group, but if it wasn't for the great, uh, members of ESDA volunteering their time, uh, we wouldn't have an award like this to, to present. So thank you to Mary Lou and all the members of ESDA.
Thank you, Chief Tree. Chief Barton?
Good evening, Mayor, again. Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, I wanna bring our attention to some of the things that we've been in the news recently. Um, and I, and I really just wanna focus in and thank, uh, the men and women that I work with at the Police Department. Uh, we've had a busy couple of weeks, as many of you may have seen. Um, and the officers within the Police Department have responded as, as professionally as I would expect and as, as you would expect. And I, I just wanna thank them for their effort, their diligence, their knowledge and experience, um, dealing with some of these scenes that they've had. One scene, we had, uh, one officer, one evidence tech collected over a hundred items of evidence on one scene. And I cannot tell you, I've, I've seen it done. I've never had to do it myself. Um, but it's painstaking to catalog all of that, keep it in order, keep it accurate in the event, um, there's ever a prosecution towards, you know, those things. So it's, it's a tremendous amount of work. It's a lot of hours and, and, you know, I, I think sometimes we, I don't thank them enough. I just want them to know, um, and, and make it known to the city as a whole that, uh, the men, women, Police Department really have been working hard lately and, and doing a great job.
All right. Thank you, Chief Barton. Administrator Nate?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the mayor mentioned it earlier, but we just had our State of the Community Event at Zion High School this pet, um, this past Saturday, which many people in this room were at. Um, we had over a hundred people from the public come out and participate. Um, the big part of the program was to do some brainstorming with the public on ways to improve Zion, things, getting feedback for things we can do better, um, ideas on how to make neighborhoods safer, variety of items. Um, it was, it was a fantastic turnout for, um, for this type of event, especially since it's relatively young. It's in its infancy. Um, but I want everyone to stay tuned because we're gonna, we're in the process of compiling all of that information to make sure it's actionable and that we can do something with it, that we take that feedback seriously. Um, and we'll be coming out with the results of those, that shortly. Probably have another event, uh, to, to follow up on that. We wanna have more of these. Um, so stay tuned, keep your eyes and ears open. Follow the social media pages on Facebook of the city so you can get notifications of when those are happening. We'd love to have this continue to grow and, um, I mean, we had, we had people say, how can I get involved? How can I volunteer? Um, ESDA's a fantastic way to do that, but just even cleaning your catch bases and picking up the garbage, uh, our, if all of our residents can do that stuff, that can really transform this community. So stay tuned. We're, uh, making good moves here.
Uh, Administrator Nate, could you just speak briefly about how that group was started? The Zion Leaders Group?
Sure. So, um, I wanna say it was a couple of years ago. Um, we had staff come together, staff and elected officials. There wasn't a whole lot of intergovernmental communication, uh, cooperation. Everyone was just kind of in, there's, you know, they call it silos. But, um, you know, we, we, we had, years ago, we had that issue within the city of departments kind of siling. We've torn down a lot of that. We work very well together with departments. We wanted to expand that out to the community, the other taxing bodies, find ways we could collaborate, um, get rid of some redundancies. There are things that the other taxing bodies do have strengths in that we can take advantage of. There's things we have strengths in that they can take advantage of. We wanted to start and have those discussions. So we, um, kinda just all started meeting all the key staff, basically the secret attendants, counterparts, you know, the other executive directors, Park, Library, uh, myself, to, um, start those discussions, start brainstorming on things we can do. Um, so we've identified priorities, things we wanna do, uh, within the community, things that we can do for financial accountability, um, just understanding what the other taxing bodies are going through so that we can, when stuff comes across our desk, we can go, oh, we don't need that, but Maryland Apple Park District was just talking about that. You know, that, that's, we, we, we applied for a grant with Schneider's office, um, for some overland flow and flooding stuff that the city alone couldn't have applied for based on its scope, but just knowing what the Park District was doing, we knew they, they were working on an overland flow project and a flooding project that together we hit the scope of, of that, that grant. So just kinda knowing that stuff, um, sitting around a table, kinda being a community support group for each other, but also collaborate on initiatives. Um, and as it, as it evolved, um, it started into a, let's share what we're doing with the community. Um, I can't remember when the first one, the past couple of years are, are blurring, but we had a, when, at the Performing Arts Center at the high school, we did a, a presentation where we kinda shared, each individually shared all of our successes and information about what the city's doing, what the high schools doing. It was kind of the state of, the first state of the community. Um, I say that was like in March of, was that nineteen or was that twenty?
January.
Or January?
January.
Was it twenty? Okay.
Yeah, that much anyway.
Yeah. That whole time is a blur. Um, so this group has kind of evolved into saying, okay, instead of us just sharing our successes, our information, let's have a sec, our second one, continue going forward with this, where we could share, just some of the collaborations and partnerships and some of our fiscal accountability that we've undertaken in the last year, but also start, uh, involving the public on this as well, so that they're informed and they feel part of the process. So it's, it's just a constantly evolving group of ideas and initiatives that we're, we're working community-wide on, not just within our four walls.
All right. Thank you. Uh, uh, I'll speak on that. My departmental commentary. Any, uh, Commissioners have any departmental commentary?
Just, it was really a great event. So thanks for all of your organization and putting it together and look forward to what's gonna come from it. Um, this is, uh, Women's History Month and Mayor, last meeting, you asked us to bring maybe a few more women, so I've got a historical figure. Uh, Ellen Lloyd came to Zion in nineteen oh six as a midwife. She was born in England and, and came over along with a lot of the, the lace factory workers. And between nineteen oh six and nineteen eighteen, delivered five hundred and fifty babies with a mortality rate of, of, um, half a percent. Uh, I mean, um, yeah, de- uh, death rate of only half a percent. At that time in the United States, the death rate for maternity cases was fifteen percent. So she's to be commended for her work. She delivered her last baby in nineteen sixty-six and a, a total of, of a little more than twenty-five hundred babies in the city of Zion. Ellen Lloyd.
Ellen Lloyd?
Yep.
Uh, according to, uh, Director Roberts, that nineteen oh six was about the year I was born, right?
Well, I, I know people that, uh, were, uh, were delivered through Ellen Lloyd.
Wow. That's, that's fabulous. Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Fryerson?
Um, I'll just echo the sentiment from the Chiefs. Uh, congratulation again to, uh, Mary Lou and all the work that ESDA puts in. Uh, it's been one of the things that's really noticeable being, you know, my time here at the city of all of the effort and the work that they put in and, you know, just how tight of a ship they run to be a, uh, majority volunteer organization. Um, so if you ever got a chance to go check them out or wanna volunteer, um, I think it's definitely worthwhile. Um, and then in addition to, um, the information from the chief, I mean, our officers have been putting in a whole lot of work and it's, it's, it's so noticeable, um, around the city, um, even hearing some of, you know, comments on social media. Uh, and one of the other things, just, uh, to add on to, uh, Saturday's event, one of the things, sitting thinking was, of all the things that were shared, the successes that are, you know, are happening, that was just a drop in the bucket of a lot of the things that are still going on in the city. And, you know, I, I echo that sentiment of, we're really moving in the right direction and it's nice to see folks collaborating at all levels, whether it be the leadership, uh, as well as the community. Um, I got the opportunity to meet some brand new residents to the city, uh, here within two months. Um, and one of the things that they called out of what attracted them to Zion was the people. Um, so they said they really felt welcome. It's not like when they go to other cities and, you know, people are crossing the street when you see them walk by. So, um, it was really a feather in the cap to, uh, all the work that the folks in this room and more are doing. So, um, thank you.
Commissioner Fisher?
Uh, nothing in particular. I wanna commend you for selecting Beverly Moll for the, uh, Liquor Control Commission. Uh, Beverly and I have worked on a number of projects over the years and I think that's an excellent choice. And so, welcome Beverly and, you know, I know you do, do a great job. You always do.
I'll try. I will, uh, echo that sentiment 'cause I know, I know Beverly and I've, uh, had opportunity, uh, to serve with her on the library board for, uh, over four years. And, uh, just her, her, her compassion, uh, for helping our community, our children, uh, any, any way possible is, is very, very commendable. And I wanted to say, Mary Lou, thank you for everything and all you and your team do, uh, to help us. Um, and in terms of, uh, the, the event on Saturday, one of the things that, um, possibility was mentioned at our table was, uh, for the next time, possibly bringing some children, uh, to the event and, and getting their perspective on things. And, uh, you know, we talk about, you know, our leaders and everybody, what we can do, but it would be interested to hear some of our children speak as well.
Great idea. Terrific idea.
Can I say a quick thing, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I've been in that district for, um, plus, since I was about three years old. And, and I've seen the, the way the town has changed. And, uh, we've gone from where people holler at us, uh, just when we're blocking the street 'cause they wanna go there. And recently, we've really noticed that, um, when we had the fire out across from your house, Commissioner Fisher, um, a guy went to turn and I'm expecting to get, he rolled the window down, I expected to get yelled at, and he yelled out, thank you for what you do, God bless you. And we're, my members are telling me they're getting that. And it's from everybody in this town that's showing the town that we have people that care and, and, and do things, you know? If we have any kind of disaster, people come out and they wanna help. And it's because our police officers are, are giving such a good picture of themselves and how they care for people through our city. And we, and ESDA have noticed the way we're treating this better because of the way our policemen and our firemen and everybody else are treating our citizens.
Thank you. Thank you. Just, just briefly, uh, I guess with this, uh, Administrator Nate talked about breaking down the silos and coming out of the silos. And I was gonna give an analogy like Run DMC and Aerosmith breaking down the walls, uh, for those that get that. But, uh, we had actually started having, we're planning on having more community meetings as we had done at restaurants prior to COVID. And we're getting a small group of people together. And we talked about, it was always the same, maybe ten people that would show up. And as this leadership group evolved, uh, everybody's been involved. Thank goodness. Most people have been involved. And just getting out and understanding that when we communicate as a unit, if I, we all know what the Park District is doing and the public library, the issues that they have there, what's going on in the city, they're all reflections of what happens overall here. And the more we know about what's going on with each of those institutions, the more we can speak to the issues, the more we can direct people to the proper person that they need to talk to, uh, about particular issues in our city. And as part of what we're trying to do is educate our residents. And we assume sometimes that they know where to go if there's an issue with their housing, uh, to be able to talk with the building department. And most people don't know that. Uh, they'll call the mayor or they'll call our commissioner and we direct them to the place they need to, to be. If there's an interest with the Park District, as I was looking at, some of the four people are talking about, uh, more parks in the subdivisions or playgrounds. And that's a Park District issue. So we're able to all talk on the same, in the same language about the same things. And people in our community start to understand that we're starting a movement of being able to better communicate with our residents. And they have an input. It's not just the people here that sit up here at the council, uh, our department heads who work so hard with the city employees to run our city. We've got twenty-five thousand people here and they all can be a positive part of making the change we want to see happen within our community. So a huge thanks for the people that showed up, for all the groups that put this together in the months that, in it seems like years, that we put in going over the charm foundation, moderating our group and helping us to stay on point with the most important initiatives to deal with our city. And I think that's about it. So item number eleven, we'll go to announcements. I always have to say this. April fifth is a Zion City Council meeting at seven PM. Can you believe it's March fifteenth already? Uh, March fourth is the time. Keeps marching forward. Time does. Uh, April twelfth, there's a, uh, at six PM is Township Annual Town Meeting at six PM. And on April fifteenth, Tax Day, city offices close for the holiday. And on April nineteenth, we have a Zion Township Board Meeting at six PM and a city council meeting at seven PM. Item number twelve, uh, we're going into closed session pursuant to five IL CS one twenty slash two, open meetings for the discussion of file pending and/or probable or imminent litigation, sale or purchase of real estate, collective borrowing and personnel. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Motion by Fryerson?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Uh, clerk, please call the rural.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. We're gonna, uh, use the council chambers for closed session. Or do we wanna?